Actually, I've been spending some of my summertime on ancestry.com. And that certainly starts to get a little nostalgic. And I happen to have parents on both sides that are of a Scottish descent. And so today, I kind of did a little theme and with the help of the Mosley kids, we're going to have a little bit of a Celtic presentation today. And first, I'm going to have, Ms. Emily Mosley is going to come up and sing Last Rose of Summer, followed by her brother, John Mosley. Ms. Emily is in the 12th grade, or she's going to be a senior this year at La Canto High. Mr. John is going to be going into, as a sophomore. And then, a lovely gentleman is the Reverend Kenneth Blythe. He is the Minister of the Good Shepherd Lutheran Church in Hernando. He's also a parent in our school system, who I've had the great honor of having our kids attend the same schools. And whose daughter, I mean, whose wife is also works in our food services at Central Ridge now, and previously at Citrus Springs Middle. And also, I want to just acknowledge that Mrs. Mosley is one of our teachers at Forest Ridge in Music. And Mr. John.
(singing) Oh, Danny boy, the pipes, the pipes are garden. From glen to glen, and down the mountain side. The summer's on, and all the flowers are dying. Tis you, tis you, must do, and I must hide. But come ye back when summer's in the meadow. For when the vane is hushed and white with snow. Yes, I'll be here in sunshine or in shadow. Oh, Danny boy, oh, Danny boy, I love you so. And if you go, when all the flowers are dying. If I am dead, as dead, I will be thee. You'll come and find the place where I have lie. And kneel and sing, and I'll be there for thee. And I will hear those soft youtre above me. And all my grave will all will sleep to be. For you will burn and tell me that you love me. And I shall sleep in peace until you go to me.
Thank you, Emily and John. Reverend? I think we just lost our system.
One, two, one, two. Three, four. So get me home second and ask me to pray. I understand. Well, it's great. Good and loving God, as this meeting is called to order, we ask you to be with us and to guide our hearts and our hands and our minds. As we begin, we honor those who invest their time and talent and treasure. We honor parents and grandparents and guardians who entrust their most precious treasure to the safekeeping of this school district, day in and day out, week in and week out, year in and year out. That Lord is an awesome responsibility and empower us, motivate us, to be a safe place of learning, where their treasure is treasure. Help us to honor teachers and administrators, who bring all that they have learned, the many things that they have learned over countless hours, days, weeks, and years, and at great cost to themselves. Help us to honor the talent that they bring to this school district, when they could so easily have taken that learning into professions that compensate them much greater than we can ever hope to. We honor this day, the children and the youths who are part of this school district, and who show up, willing, eager, trusting, or even a wee bit rebellious, and who look to us to teach and nurture and encourage them. We honor also the volunteers, unpaid, unsung, who give of their precious time when so many other things in life and in this community make calls upon their time, but who instead choose to give their time to us. Lord, may we always see this job, this profession, this calling, as an investment, a down payment on the future of this county. And so we also pause to honor the taxpayers, many of whom, many of whom have no children in this school district, who are willing nonetheless to make that down payment on the future of this county that we all love. And lastly, Lord, help us all, every one of us, to avoid the cynicism that comes from knowing the price of everything and the value of nothing. We cry out to you, in the various and many names that our traditions have given you, including the God of Abraham and Isaac and Jacob, and the Father of our Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend. Would you just introduce yourselves?
I'm Bella Adams.
And we're going to rise as we say our national anthem, I mean, our pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you both. Thank you, John, thank you, Emily.
(inaudible).
While Doc is doing that, I'm going to go ahead and ask if we could get a motion to adopt the agenda.
I approve.
Second. I have a motion by Ms. Bryant, a second by Mr. Dodd, to approve the agenda as recommended by the superintendent. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Do we have any citizens' comments?
No, sir.
There'll be a second opportunity at 5:45. And move to, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda. I have a motion on Ms. Pow, I'm sorry, by Ms. Bowe, a second by Ms. Powers, to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five zero. If you can read the recognitions of donations.
Ten thousand dollar donation by neighbor Minnaway High School, a four thousand dollar donation to the Kent High School for Paul Shaw Charitable Scholarship Fund, a three hundred and seventy dollar donation to Citrus Springs Elementary Schools and PTO, a two thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollar donation to the Kent Primary School for Lowe Charitable Education Foundation, that completes our donations that we've done.
Thank you very much, and thank you to the community for your investment in our schools and our students. We'll have presentations at 5:00 PM, and with that, I believe we're going to move to Mr. Bishop.
Good afternoon. I would like to request the board's approval of the instructional support recommendations.
I have a motion by Ms. Powers, a second by Ms. Bryant, to approve the instructional support recommendations. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five zero.
My next agenda item is to request approval of the appointment of administrative personnel for 2015-16.
I move to approve the administrative personnel for 2015-16.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Powers, a second by Ms. Bowe, to approve appointment of administrative personnel for 2015-2016. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five zero.
I'd like to recognize Ms. Rattles, Ms. Rattles, for his appointment to the Kent Primary School.
Thank you, Mr. Rattles. Thank you.
My next agenda item is to request approval of the instructional personnel for 2015-16.
I have a motion to approve the instructional personnel for 2015-16.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Dodd, a second by Ms. Bryant, to approve the appointment of instructional personnel for 2015-2016. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero.
I'd like to request approval of the appointment of support personnel for 2015-16.
I move to approve the appointment for the superintendent of support personnel for 2015-16.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Bowe, a second by Ms. Bryant, to approve the appointment of support personnel for 2015-2016. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five zero.
I request the board's approval of the instructional personnel for summer school 2015.
I move to approve the instructional personnel for summer school 2015.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Bryant, a second by Mr. Dodd, to approve instructional personnel for the summer school 2015. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five zero.
At this time, I'd like to request the board's approval of support personnel for summer school 2015.
I move to approve support personnel for summer school for 2015.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Dodd, a second by Ms. Bowe, to approve support personnel for summer school for 2015. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five zero.
Agenda item number seven, I'd like to request the board's approval of ten term paraprofessional units for educational services for the 2015 school year.
I move to approve the ten term paraprofessional units for the educational services for the 2015-16 school year.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Bryant, a second by Mr. Dodd, to approve ten term paraprofessional units for educational services for the 2015-2016 school year. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five zero.
And lastly, I'd like to request the board's approval of funding for the 2015-16 school year for the term positions as assigned.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Powers, a second by Ms. Bowe, to approve funding for the 2015-2016 school year term positions. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Yes, Mr. Bishop, hold on one second.
On the administrative personnel, we had four new administrators going up there, some in central, you know, my side, and we always find it clear, but it's maybe bad for some people today. It does have properties with less maintenance and right.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. I think we're right to budget on that. Yeah, it's you, Dave.
As you know, we're in special session, we really don't have much of a budget. There are some things coming off the press right now, there's two major sessions, maybe coming together with some type of budget for education for 2015-16 year. The latest word is, I actually got it at 11:30, and then I see Miss Bowe just shots up her mouth, and some information she believes now can be verified. It looks like they are settling on about a funded FTE funding of about $7,000, $97,000 monthly, three percent, or actually, that's not quite as much as what we have, the House proposal, $7,000 per, but very close. There are some other things, we're talking about technology, so we're looking at, hopefully, they're going to come to some agreement over the weekend, and then it's going to be a permanent, I guess, for a couple of weeks, because session will be in March, so hopefully by next week, the end of the week, we should have some, so it won't be much different than how we had before, the big difference should be is that we can come back to a FTE for next year, which includes a micro school, so you'll see a bigger funding that will probably come out, a lot of it's going to be a micro school as well. So we're hopeful that they're coming to a consensus and an agreement. We are also hopeful that our funding's at least five stations is going to make it. I know that last word was dropped out of current budget, or not current budget, and I think there's some jockey in fact, a number of projects, so we're still hoping that that's going to make it through the process. And always, if it does make it through the process, we're going to have to make it to the veto, we've got to establish a strategy. So we're still hoping that's going to go through. Lastly, just so you know, the agenda, the increase for micro school, only thing that we're having to work out is signage, and we're pushing it on there, so we probably will have to get, so. Any questions you have at all, off the question list, or you already have something. Now, for the budget workshop we're going to have on June 23rd, don't know how much we're going to have to be able to put together a budget update as far as that workshop, because we're not going to get the numbers until, probably not next year, but the week after, we'll definitely have BFP run, which will be right around when the budget workshop happens. But what I do plan on looking at is coming back with the capital budget, and showing those from the last discussion we had, and seeing how the capital budget does kind of flow out. We did get a preliminary taxable value from Mr. Cook, and it is a little bit less than what was in the FFP, not that much, but it was a little bit less. Of course, July 1st, he'll certify the taxable, that'll be the final taxable, that goes into the second calculation, that will be in July, when we approve the tentative budget.
I was looking at the budget generally, the investments, and question came to mind, do we decide when to sell stocks and that sort of thing?
We don't have stocks, only fixed income. But basically, a conversation between me and the investment advisor, as to if there's a gain that can be made by the sale, and if you can achieve more interest or better yield on a new buy, you could do that. But it's all based on the market conditions, what yields are presenting itself, and also based on our board policy, that will be combined with the sale. Correct. No other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. We can move into approving minutes.
Move to approve the minutes?
Second. Motion by Ms. Bryant, a second by Mr. Dodd, to approve the minutes. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five zero. Attorney Legal Matters.
The only issue I'm going to bring in front of the board today is the one that we had discussed last time in regards to the commercial disposal fees. That was one of the issues that Mr. Silwell brought forward when he came at our last board meeting. What I would ask the board to do is allow me to send a letter to the county attorney, asking, outlining my position on that, which is that I can't find an explicit waiver right now of sovereign immunity in the statute. To justify the county's position as far as the reason, the legal reason we have to pay those. I think our next payment is due June 19th, something like that, something along those lines, and ask for a response before that date. But I want just to let the board know what I was going to do, and see if there's any objection to it. I wanted to tell us exactly what their legal reason is, why we are forced, not forced to pay that, what their justification is on sending us that bill and having us pay it, is that.
I think that's a good move. I mean, what you're saying basically is you want them to respond to us, the reason why we should pay it, that we're not going to pay the bill, but my question would be, shouldn't you get a response back? Then the next decision would be, when will we decide on whether we pay the bill or not?
Well, depending on what the response is, you know, we would either pay it under protest or not pay it, and then, you know, then seek a declaratory action in court, to get a court or justify, you know, our position. But right now, I'm of the opinion that I can't find an explicit waiver. If it's a tax, we have sovereign immunity, we don't have to pay it. If it's, but if it's a fee, then you either have to waive that by contract, which you can, you can contract with someone, with the county and do that, or you have to have an explicit waiver in the statute who says that they can't charge us that fee. But just maybe we'll have to found ones, and I'd like to see what their opinion is, and then, if you prove me wrong, if you prove me wrong, it's not going to work. So as long as I'm here, objection, or anybody have any concerns about getting that out? That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Richard. Mr. Clotter, if you still there, is there anything you'd have for us, sir, or sir? Okay, Mr. Blacker? Mr. Dodd?
The only thing that I would like to say is, first of all, the graduations went very smoothly, it's my first time at graduation, so I was very impressed with how those went through. So the weather held off, great weather, and it was good to see all those families there celebrating, you know, a big reason why we're here is to see kids graduate from high school. I would like to mention to the board again, that as I look down the road for an academy program of some kind at Citrus High School, we've been, I've had some discussion with the superintendent, and, you know, that we're still hopefully looking at, not next school year, but maybe by the following school year, have a plan that would come before the board, hopefully, this next year, that would bring an academy of some kind to Citrus High School, because I really think that would be a good thing for Citrus High School to have an academy. And we've talked about some things, Mr. Ilgert, when he was here last time, we talked about some opportunities, some options there, and, you know, I really like that technology spend with a Microsoft academy or something along the lines of technology. I think there's a lot of things that we could, that could benefit our students at Citrus County from having that opportunity, and that school, that academy would be at Citrus High School. So I just wanted to again, mention that to the board. That is something, as I said on that, that committee, that that's something that has been discussed, and I just want to make sure that, you know, it's not something that we can have in place by next school year, but a lot of parents really feel like that would be a great draw for Citrus High School. So I just want to make sure that stays with the board, that's all I have.
Ms. Bryant?
Well, I attended the safety, because we put on a safety expo at Citrus High School. It was quite good, you might have gotten a cushion, I hope you did. Safety first, last and always. I agree with Mr. Dodd, the graduations were awesome, awesome graduations, and all retirement parties, went to cornerstone for their breakfast, which was yummy, saw all those old people retiring, and I knew all of them, that should tell me more than thanks. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Bryant. Ms. Bowe?
I do want to say congratulations to all of the staff who chose to retire. You will be missed, and I know we still have some that are counting the days that just around the corner will be out the door. So with that said, thank you very much for your service. I also want to point out, I've had several people, because of all the movement throughout the district, several people ask me, why are you doing this? Why are you changing? Why are you moving? Why, why, why? And I just, I say it to every person, but I just want to make sure people understand that the board has a statutory obligation to approve any staffing moves that are presented. to approve any staffing moves that are presented unless we have just cause. And if we have just cause that someone cannot do the job, then we're obligated to supply in writing and orally why we wouldn't want to see someone in that role. So with that said, I congratulate all of you that are going to be enjoying a new position next year and wish you the best. And that's all.
Ms. Powers?
I just wanted to mention that this week, the Board of School Board Association meeting in Tampa tomorrow, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and bring back some information. Forward to ponder. Maybe for you to look over, Mr. Blocker got money, sir. Okay. But anyhow, we'll bring back the information and share it with everybody, so. Have any questions I asked this, and we'll be happy to respond.
Thank you, Ms. Powers. I do want to thank our marvelous staff and administrators for the hard work and having such a successful graduation. I specifically want to just mention John Calasante and his team, who every day would move those stages, those chairs, and get them in place for the next graduation. And with that, that often was helping him, our athletic directors, Tony Stooks, Ron Allen, Larry Bishop, and our head custodians of Larry Summerlin, Robert McKinley, and Jeff Fisher. These individuals and their teams, they're just awesome. They just are so awesome. And they really are making memories for those families and those graduates, so we thank you. So I wanted to make sure I had said that. Ms. Bryant and Ms. Hemel and I had an opportunity to visit our new Weatherstem station at the Marine Science Station. And if you have a chance, you can either download the app or visit citrusweatherstem.com. And you can see pictures on either side of the rivers. You can also see a comble, compilation. Thank you. Of those pictures of the 24-hour period and kind of see them within just a few seconds. It really is gonna provide some neat learning data for our students, both onsite and offsite. So I appreciate Mr. Blocker always working to have those grants take place and having that happen at the school. Mr. Olson for his work on that project, and I'm excited about that moving forward. Excuse me. Want to also thank the United Way. The United Way has had a great after-school program at Crystal River Middle School. And I understand now they're gonna be developing one at Inverness Middle School. And that has been something that has been very successful on the west side, and I'm excited to see that develop on the east side. Something too, and Mr. Dodd, I just wanted to respond, and I wanted to give you that opportunity. I have said for years about the idea of having a magnet program at Citrus High School. And I'm excited to see what we come up with. I continue to say, though, I want us to make sure that we're also supporting our existing programs. Because that isn't something that's been easy to do with these budget times. And so I understand the desire to keep approximately 60 students that are going over to the IB programs from Citrus High School. And attract them. But I want to make sure that we are doing the correct thing and not creating new challenges when we do that. We've had Microsoft Academies at each of the high schools, and I certainly would love to see that expand and grow. But I do think it's something we need to have a full, a full presentation as to see where that goes. So I am, I am encouraged by it, but I'm still a little bit hesitant to see the whole plan in place. So that's just something I have. Go ahead, Ms. Hemel. Oh, no, I have just one other thing. Mr., I'm sorry, Commissioner Carnahan reached out to the superintendent, myself, and I believe some other board members about his willingness to put on his agenda, bringing back the school representative on the Planning Development Council. And he is interested in putting that on his agenda for the June 23rd meeting, for their board to have reconsideration. And I'm most grateful that he's willing to do that, that he's reached out to us. What I think would help is if we would send a letter of support ahead of that. That this board would be most appreciative of that and reinstating it as we had previously had on this board, on that representation. And so I would like the direction from this board, if we could send a letter to the PDC. And, or I should say, send a letter to the Board of County Commissioners and copy the PDC on that. So if there's any questions, comments, or if I can get that direction from you all. We'll get that out. And with that, Ms. Hemel, I'll turn it over to you.
I don't have a lot. I want to address the comment Ms. Balfour made. There have been a lot of administrative movements, and I think Ms. Bernarami's pretty well kept everybody up on that. And I think that board members know that it's not an easy task to put the right people in the right places. And I do believe that that's a talent that we've experienced in Citrus County. I know that there's been lots and lots of interviews, lots and lots of requests. And I get requests from board members sometimes, or questions on why did so-and-so go certain places? And, you know, as well as I do when one or two people, administrators move, it starts a whole chain of action. And so I want to make sure that board members know that, and I do get that, that if I bring someone to you and there's no just cause, you are statutorily supposed to vote for that person. But it's also your responsibility, look at the resume, to make sure that we haven't brought someone to you all who's not certified, qualified, or of years of experience. So I would hope that would be your response to the public, that there are many, many man-hours that go, and you can ask Mr. Blocker. And there's a lot of heated discussions on who goes where, and we have to go back and make sure we trust the process when we move people. So, but I will tell you that it's been my nature that if I know for sure who we want to put in a certain place because they fit in that school, then we don't do the interview and that person's placed there. So that is our responsibility as operations of the district, but there's a lot of people involved with every decision we make. So a lot of movement, and we don't see the movement sometimes, so we bring them all together, our first meeting in July. And we give out new badges, and they keep coming to the front, and we switch out badges. And I scratched my head and said, we do all that? So a lot of good stuff. We've got a lot of great people coming up the system and coming through the system. They've been here for many, many years. They've done their, I don't wanna say done their time. They've done the things they need to do to get to where they are. So we're excited about new blood. We've got four new middle school principals next year. So good luck, Mr. Clodder and Mr. Rollin'. There'll be a lot of meetings going on. And these middle school principals, they meet monthly to go over things that they do. So Mr. Rollin's involved with every one of them. So we're excited about the year coming up. We're sad about the ones retiring, but we know that's life and that's what happens. So we're, good stuff's gonna happen.
Ms. Hemel, it's an exciting year. And Mr. Adams, I just, because you're here, it's a good example. This is another person that has been just an asset, technology-wise, administrative-wise, and very excited about that. So it's gonna be an exciting next school year.
A lot of good stuff.
Anything else?
No.
Board members, we have a 5 o'clock cert, and so we will stand in recess until 5 o'clock.